... And we are about to begin our annual state program, the State of the Month. So those of you who have just seen our live broadcast on the United States of America, we need to start with the first. We need to have a lot of this together. We can't have it in one place. If we care about it, we just want to help our people out. And we have to build our legacy, to exhibit what we're doing, and tell them that we're here and we're here to help them. And we appreciate when these leaders here in the paper are saying, "I'm going to make that work for the rest of the world." I remember them all the time. So I feel very glad that they're able to be celebrated, and I'm just one of those people. And especially I, telling your folks that we have two institutions in our hands, both here and this room, and it's such great to have you here. And we choose to support you, and I think we have a lot of them. You have a really dedicated, aggressive, and we have members, uh, that are a lot of high schools and that have got some kind of service, the mayor's job, the six counties, city of fantastic jobs, that's two ways to say, three ways to say, and my house is there, they like to do this, okay? We also have a youth agency, uh, tonight today, and leaders, people from all over the state, and so far, many children, and we're still a good place. So I'm saying last night, though, many of our users are very hard at their own terms, between the other day's stuff, and today, I'm starting on another thing to generate more use of the new rights, and they're waiting for, uh, fighting for community and stuff together. So I would say that, um, it's not as good as trying to try to say that, but, uh, just locally, we're in the form of, you know, the state of the country, the state of the country. And we're only able to do that for the after. The first one, they were clipped, and five, the six days, they're everybody's still about. They go through, and then they have to explain to each other, the project today, what's happening in our town, which involves the leaders, and the leader in the top, the leader about, some things happen in areas of state, of state, and by the way, that's. And I know, and so that, we have the five years of two years. The first two years could be those nine months before, and we just keep it for a long time, and I said, "I need four years." So it's more, we have the product, it's a pretty much facility, and we're just hanging out of the way, it's started, and then the pictures could be so, and then the other side is starting to back, so, uh, they're trying to hide their, you know, and they're trying to chat about, you know, where we are, uh, so the staff, so we can, uh, prepare, and we could talk about safe stuff, about further, so the people have videos, pictures, and so forth, and we also pay for them. And how is that picture to be, I don't know, this one, please? It's just about me. And so, third, last year, was the student day, the plan, the best day, a program has got thirty more plans, so to say, and the year ago, we said, "A couple nights," and the record is a sixty, and still a minute, so, and then the year, people, students, and people, and so to say, the body says, "I guess I'll do it." To the staff, and the students, they didn't get what they wanted. And the first week, or the first time around, we got, you know, from all of the local class, a town has got thirty, so this time, all two, a kind of an individual, and the first time around, let's just say, we're going to say, "Hey, six guys, you're a good partner in the state, and coming, we're right up here, and come again." So third, I would just say, it's older, and it's eight runners, we have five, we've got, say. And also, I'd like to send out numbers of volunteers here to conduct the program, let's not be so dangerous, let's not be, uh, the students, let's not be so serious, like they're, 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 yeah. And so, let's not be so dangerous, we give a lot of time to them, and we're giving attention on the first year, and then the rest of the year, so that this is going to be a good year. These people are coming back here, and I would say, oh, it's almost a year, because they're going to be, they're going to be, they're going to be, they're going to be there, please. And so, I, so I'm trying to find the other, so I'm trying to find. So, 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 so. 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 So, 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 so.[376.12][376.12][S01. So, 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 so.[378.12][378.12][S01. So, 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 so.[380.12][380.12][S01. So, 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 so.[382.12][382.12][S01. So, 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 so.[384.12][384.12][S01. So, 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 so.[386.12][386.12][S01. So, 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 so.[388.12][388.12][S01. So, 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 so.[390.12][390.12][S01. So, 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 so.[392.12][392.12][S01. So, 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 so.[394.12][394.12][S01. So, 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 so.[396.12][396.12][S01. So, 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 so.[398.12][398.12][S01. So, 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 so.[400.12][400.12][S01. So, 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 so.[402.12][402.12][S01. So, 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 so.[404.12][404.12][S01. So, 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 so.[406.12][406.12][S01. So, 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 so.[408.12][408.12][S01. So, 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 so.[410.12][410.12][S01. So, 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 so.[412.12][412.12][S01. So, 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 so.[414.12][414.12][S01. So, 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 so.[416.12][416.12][S01. So, 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 so.[418.12][418.12][S01. So, 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 so.[420.12][420.12][S01. So, 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 so.[422.12][422.12][S01. So, 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 so.[424.12][424.12][S01. So, 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 so.[426.12][426.12][S01. So, 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 so.[428.12][428.12][S01. So, 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 so.[430.12][430.12][S01. So, 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 so.[432.12][432.12][S01. So, 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 so.[434.12][434.12][S01. So, 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 so.[436.12][436.12][S01. So, 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 so.[438.12][438.12][S01. So, 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 so.[440.12][440.12][S01. So, 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 so.[442.12][442.12][S01. So, 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 so.[444.12][444.12][S01. So, 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 so.[446.12][446.12][S01. So, 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 so.[448.12][448.12][S01. So, 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 so.[450.12][450.12][S01. So, 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 so.[452.12][452.12][S01. So, 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 so.[454.12][454.12][S01. So, 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 so.[456.12][456.12][S01. So, 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 so.[458.12][458.12][S01. So, 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 so.[460.12][460.12][S01. So, 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 so.[462.12][462.12][S01. So, 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 so.[464.12][464.12][S01. So, 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 so.[466.12][466.12][S01. So, 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 so.[468.12][468.12][S01. So, 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 so.[470.12][470.12][S01. So, 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 so.[472.12][472.12][S01. So, 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 so.[474.12][474.12][S01. So, 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 so.[476.12][476.12][S01. So, 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 so.[478.12][478.12][S01. So, 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 so.[480.12][480.12][S01. So, 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 so.[482.12][482.12][S01. So, 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 so.[484.12][484.12][S01. So, 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 so.[486.12][486.12][S01. So, 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 so.[488.12][488.12][S01. So, 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 so.[490.12][490.12][S01. So, 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 so.[492.12][492.12][S01. So, 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 so.[494.12][494.12][S01. So, 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 so.[496.12][496.12][S01. So, 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 so.[498.12][498.12][S01. So, 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 so.[500.12][500.12][S01. So, 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 so.[502.12][502.12][S01. So, 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 so.[504.12][504.12][S01. So, 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 so.[506.12][506.12][S01. So, 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 so.[508.12][508.12][S01. So, 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 so.[510.12][510.12][S01. So, 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 so.[512.12][512.12][S01. So, 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 so.[514.12][514.12][S01. So, 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 so.[516.12][516.12][S01. So, 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 so.[518.12][518.12][S01. So, 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 so.[520.12][520.12][S01. So, 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 so.[522.12][522.12][S01. So, 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 so.[524.12][524.12][S01. So, 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 so.[526.12][526.12][S01. So, 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 so.[528.12][528.12][S01. So, 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 so.[530.12][530.12][S01. So, 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 so.[532.12][532.12][S01. So, 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 so.[534.12][534.12][S01. So, 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 so.[536.12][536.12][S01. So, 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 so.[538.12][538.12][S01. So, 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 so.[540.12][540.12][S01. So, 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 so.[542.12][542.12][S01. So, 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 so.[544.12][544.12][S01. So, 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 so.[546.12][546.12][S01. So, 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 so.[548.12][548.12][S01. So, 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 so.[550.12][550.12][S01. So, 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 so.[552.12][552.12][S01. So, 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 so.[554.12][554.12][S01. So, 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 so.[556.12][556.12][S01. So, 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 so.[558.12][558.12][S01. So, 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 so.[560.12][560.12][S01. So, 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 so.[562.12][562.12][S01. So, 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 so.[564.12][564.12][S01. So, 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 so.[566.12][566.12][S01. So, 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 so.[568.12][568.12][S01. So, 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 so.[570.12][570.12][S01. So, 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 so.[572.12][572.12][S01. So, 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 so.[574.12][574.12][S01. So, 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 so.[576.12][576.12][S01. So, 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 so.[578.12][578.12][S01. So, 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 so.[580.12][580.12][S01. So, 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 so.[582.12][582.12][S01. So, 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 so.[584.12][584.12][S01. So, 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 so.[586.12][586.12][S01. So, 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 so.[588.12][588.12][S01. So, 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 so.[590.12][590.12][S01. So, 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 so.[592.12][592.12][S01. So, 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 so.[594.12][594.12][S01. So, 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 so.[596.12][596.12][S01. So, 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 so.[598.12][598.12][S01. So, 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 so.[600.12][600.12][S01. So, 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 so.[602.12][602.12][S01. So, 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 so.[604.12][604.12][S01. So, 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 so.[606.12][606.12][S01. So, 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 so.[608.12][608.12][S01. So, 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 so.[610.12][610.12][S01. So, 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 so.[612.12][612.12][S01. So, 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 so.[614.12][614.12][S01. So, 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 so.[616.12][616.12][S01. So, 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 so.[618.12][618.12][S01. So, 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 so.[620.12][620.12][S01. So, 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 so.[622.12][622.12][S01. So, 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 so.[624.12][624.12][S01. So, 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 so.[626.12][626.12][S01. So, 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 so.[628.12][628.12][S01. So, 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 so.[630.12][630.12][S01. So, 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 so.[632.12][632.12][S01. So, 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 so.[634.12][634.12][S01. So, 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 so.[636.12][636.12][S01. So, 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 so.[638.12][638.12][S01. So, 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 so.[640.12][640.12][S01. So, 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 so.[642.12][642.12][S01. So, 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 so.[644.12][644.12][S01. So, 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 so.[646.12][646.12][S01. So, 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 so.[648.12][648.12][S01. So, 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 so.[650.12][650.12][S01. So, 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 so.[652.12][652.12][S01. So, 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 so.[654.12][654.12][S01. So, 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 so.[656.12][656.12][S01. So, 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 so.[658.12][658.12][S01. So, 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 so.[660.12][660.12][S01. So, 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 so.[662.12][662.12][S01. So, 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 so.[664.12][664.12][S01. So, 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 so.[666.12][666.12][S01. So, 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 so.[668.12][668.12][S01. So, 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 so.[670.12][670.12][S01. So, 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 so.[672.12][672.12][S01. So, 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 so.[674.12][674.12][S01. So, 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 so.[676.12][676.12][S01. So, 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 so.[678.12][678.12][S01. So, 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 so.[680.12][680.12][S01. So, 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 so.[682.12][682.12][S01. So, 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 so.[684.12][684.12][S01. So, 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 so.[686.12][686.12][S01. So, 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 so.[688.12][688.12][S01. So, 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 so.[690.12][690.12][S01. So, 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 so.[692.12][692.12][S01. So, 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 so.[694.12][694.12][S01. So, 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 so.[696.12][696.12][S01. So, 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 so.[698.12][698.12][S01. So, 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 so.[700.12][700.12][S01. So, 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 so.[702.12][702.12][S01. So, 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 so.[704.12][704.12][S01. So, 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 so.[706.12][706.12][S01. So, 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 so.[708.12][708.12][S01. So, 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 so.[710.12][710.12][S01. So, 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 so.[712.12][712.12][S01. So, 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 so.[714.12][714.12][S01. So, 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 so.[716.12][716.12][S01. So, 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 so.[718.12][718.12][S01. So, 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 so.[720.12][720.12][S01. So, 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 so.[722.12][722.12][S01. So, 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 so.[724.12][724.12][S01. So, 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 so.[726.12][726.12][S01. So, 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 so.[728.12][728.12][S01. So, 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 so.
To Councilmember Daniels, please.
From Mesquite Elementary, Kylie Barrett. From Neely Traditional Academy, Cassandra Emma Hatch. From Oak Tree Elementary, Hakim Rutledge. From Patterson Elementary, Angel Sagaste. From Pioneer Elementary, Taylor Hodges. From Playa del Rey Elementary, Garrett Young. From Power Ranch Elementary, Lauren Middlestat. From Quartz Hill Elementary, Joshua Faber. From Settlers Point Elementary, Victoria Bradjen. From Sonoma Ranch Elementary, Tabitha Rush. From Spectrum Elementary, Jackson Solomon. From Town Meadows Elementary, Ava J. Curry. From Val Vista Academy, Jonah Morgan. And Mayor from Val Vista Lakes Elementary, Aiden Stevens.
We'll invite Group Two to step forward and we'll do a picture together. A big round of applause for Group Two, thank you. If you are in junior higher high school, please come on down, you are Group Three.
Thank you. Your fashion, your fashion.
I'm just saying. Based on other things I've observed, it looks nice.
I'm going to. So, I decided I had to do it.
All right, let's continue, Group Three.
From Camp Verde High School, and Mayor, here's commentary, we have Pradisha Tawari. Woo-hoo! (APPLAUSE) Pradisha is the Chair of our Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee this year, and she's doing an excellent job, so, thank you.
Is this where I go like?
Yes. Hope you got that on film.
No, I was just gonna. Do it again, do it again.
We'll make him do it again. (LAUGHING) From Desert Hills High School, Lizette Alkasair.
It's the second selfie.
(LAUGHING) You are the first, I love it. That's totally allowed, that's awesome.
Oh, should I get mine out for you now?
Yeah. From Gilbert Classical Academy, Alexandra Witt. From Gilbert Early College, Lanay Tuckshorn. From Gilbert High School, Taylor Templeton. It's a good brother right there, that's awesome. From Gilbert Junior High, Garrett Taylor. From Greenfield Junior High, Riley Johnson. From Highland High School, Jack Nelson. From Mesquite High School, Alexandra Neva. From Mesquite Junior High, Haley Christensen. From Perry High, Courtney N. Nichols. From South Valley Junior High, Kyle McLamore.
Yay, Kyle!
From Williamsfield High School, Arandi Ortiz Galvin. And Mayor from Cooley Middle School, Zachary Bowers.
Thank you, Group Three, come forward, we'll do the picture together. This Group Three gets part of the council, we have to get on our toes on this one, but, Big round of applause for Group Three, thank you. The last part of our program, Katie Roman, Abby, Principal Pace, please come on down.
And just stand here to my right, please. Would all of the teachers, school administrators, please stand who are in the audience, so we can recognize you and thank you for your service. Also, representing our Gilbert Public Schools Superintendent, Dr. Rice, if you could come forward and just stand over here to the right, School Board Member Julie Smith, if you can stand here to the right. The last Friday morning, Burke Elementary School, a special event took place, and it's Chicken of the Sea and Channel Three joined together to do a special recognition of one of our teachers and one of our students. Now, they're also going to be staying, and they'll be honored in just a few minutes in the first part of the town council meeting, but I wanted to make sure that everyone saw the two of you, and I wanted, and Abby, this is, I'm just going to have to give this to you, but let me, let me tell you what this represents. This is from the Lewis Backyard. Now, that's an orange, isn't it? That's huge! It's a great big orange. And I was thinking about this wonderful teacher to your right, and the Chicken of the Sea and Channel Three heard about, and, Miss Katie. They heard about Miss Katie through Abby, and Abby is a cancer survivor, and the last few years have been some challenges, and Miss Katie was there to help her along the way, occasionally going to her home to help her keep up with studies, to encourage her, and to me, Miss Katie is like teachers throughout all of Gilbert. And Abby, when I saw this orange, I know that that's a big orange, and it's a fun thing to look at and say, "Wow, that's huge." Now, I realize the skin's probably thick, and maybe it's not the juiciest orange, and it's, it might not even have a lot of juice in it, and some smaller oranges would, but this is what teachers do. It's those little things. It's those little things that individuals like Abby notice and will never forget. And so, on behalf of all of the teachers in Gilbert, Miss Katie, we recognize you, we thank Abby, and we're going to get into a few more minutes of this in this, in a few minutes in town council part, we thank Principal Pace from Burke Elementary, our superintendent, a member of the board, for their support, but for just a moment, if you could, as you look at that picture and realize there was a lot to it, there was a gift, but it had everything to do with Miss Katie being embarrassed for just a few minutes, because as she said on the video, she was just doing things that she loves to do as a teacher, that's to serve her students. So, as we recognize all of our teachers tonight and thank Abby for that recognition, please join me in a big round of applause for Miss Katie. Yes, we need to do a picture with, let's get this whole group right around Abby and Miss Katie.
Look at mom! Oh, no. Aw. Look at that.
Thank you, may be seated. Gardinha, Gardinha, if you could just stay there, town council members, if you can get right here real fast, this concludes, well, I better say while we're bringing this group up, and it concludes our Student Citizen of the Month program, and thank you for coming, and to our students that were recognized, all the great things you're doing, please keep doing, because you are bright lights in Gilbert. What I'm having right here is council members are wearing ties, and then Councilmember Daniels has a scarf, and we had Operation Welcome Home, and so there was one member of the council that wore a red tie to be patriotic, but this group is wearing a tie. Last week, we had, from our sister city, Newton Abbey, Northern Ireland, Mayor Fraser Agnew here, and he gave all members of the council a tie, and so, as we conclude in the transition, we'll say goodbye to everyone, we'll get the council right here, take the picture, so we can send it to Newton Abbey, our sister city, so get a little... we can send it to Newton Abbey, our sister city. So get a little closer, the group picture. We'll do one just with all those in ties, and the one without a tie to the right side. And you are officially dismissed, but if you'd like to stay here and see this picture...oh, first picture take, we're just with the ties. Then I get in for the picture. Do I get down like this? And the regular town council meeting will begin in just the next two or three minutes. We'll begin in just a moment. I'm looking to see if we have any Boy Scouts here tonight. This will be our five-second warning, then we will begin. Welcome to our April 17, 2014 Gilbert Town Council Meeting. We have just completed our Student Citizen of the Month, and so the meeting has officially started. We will continue with an invocation. As noted on the agenda, the invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief, or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk. An interested person should contact the clerk for further information. The invocation tonight will be offered by Reverend William Jefferson of the Benevolent and Protective Order of Elks, Gilbert Lodge 2848. Reverend Jefferson, thank you for being here. And after the invocation, Councilmember Taylor will introduce the individual who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We invite those here in council chambers to please arise.
Will we please bow our heads? Heavenly Father, we gather here today to honor and praise you. You are the source of all of our blessings, and for this we thank you. Father, we are grateful for our many opportunities to live and thrive in a nation in which we are free to come and assemble together as a community, although our passionate ideals may differ. Allow us to strive towards using that passion to better understand each other's hearts, guide us down the path of righteousness, allow us to always reach for your hand before and while decisions are being made. Father, we ask that you bless all who are assembled here this evening, so that wisdom, productivity, and respect fills this place as full as the love that you place in all of our hearts. Let the work and accomplishments of this gathering be in your name, in the holy name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Mayor Jack Nelson from Highland High School will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Our deputy clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
A quorum is present.
As I mentioned, we just completed our Student Citizen of the Month, and one of our students to be recognized was still at his baseball game. So from Highland High School, Jack Nelson. Jack, if you could come forward. I'm going to have you hold this, and I'll stand with you right here, and we'll look at Gardinha, and then any others who want to take pictures, and I'll put this down. And Jack, what position do you play?
Pitcher.
Okay, let me just make a quick announcement. Councilmembers haven't heard this yet. This week, and I didn't even have this on my bucket list, on August the 1st, and I should preface it by saying, there's a university coming to downtown Gilbert, St. Xavier University from Chicago. On August the 1st, I was invited to throw out the ceremonial pitch at the Chicago White Sox game. Can you work with me and get me ready? I've gotta be able to do it 60 feet, right? And I can't bounce it. It's gotta be right over the plate, and it's gotta be a strike. So you can work with me? All right, thank you. Miss Katie, Abby, Principal Pace, if you could come on down again. And let's see. Kurt, the slide that we have that is still on that screen, if we could get that back up here. We just minutes ago, at the end of Student Citizen of the Month, had a special recognition that included Miss Katie and Abby. And this is Miss Katie Roman from Burke Elementary School, Principal Brad Pace from Burke Elementary School, and this is Abby Strickland right here in front of me. Abby wanted to recognize Miss Katie as her teacher, and in a very tender way, I mentioned that Abby is a fighter, and she has been fighting cancer the last few years and is a cancer survivor. During that time, Miss Katie, as her teacher, continued to make sure she was doing well in school, occasionally going to her home to...did she give you homework or just check up on you? Probably both. And Miss Katie went above and beyond, and last Friday morning was surprised when all of a sudden, the school gathered and Channel Three showed up, and there was this big recognition from Chicken of the Sea to thank Miss Katie for all of her efforts. And so what we wanted to do, in the spirit of gratitude, is to give to both of you from the town of Gilbert, a certificate of appreciation that says, and it's got the two names, "For representing Gilbert's number-one asset are teachers and students. We express gratitude for your above-and-beyond example of service to each other." So, Miss Katie, there's an Abby, there's yours, and then...oh, not time for another picture, but Gardinha, this time, I'm just gonna bring this out again, because Abby gets to take this if she'd like, and the point we were bringing out, this is a pretty big orange, but on behalf of our teachers in Gilbert, it's the little things that turn into really, really big things. And this was picked in the Lewis Backyard, Abby, but it's...it may not have as much juice as the little oranges, like I said, but it's symbolic of our teachers in Gilbert. All they do, those little things, that become such great big things. So, we're ready for the picture? Abby, thank you so much. Councilmember...thank you so much. Councilmember Taylor will now read our Pillar of the Month as part of our Character Council Program, please.
Mayor, this month's highlighted pillar is trustworthiness. As council members and town staff, we agree to be honest, not deceive, cheat, or steal. Be reliable, do what you say you will do, have the courage to do the right thing, build a good reputation, be loyal, stand by family, friends, and country.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Ray will have you do the next two, and then Councilmember Peterson, you're on deck.
We want to invite a few people to come up as part of our Parkinson's Awareness Month. Ashila Fitzgerald, Annette Edwards, are they here? Come on up. Also, Thomas Viviano. I'm gonna pass the microphone down, have each one of you introduce yourself, and then I'll talk about the proclamation.
Hi, I'm Tom Viviano. I'm the Director of the American Parkinson Disease Association here in the state of Arizona.
I'm Sheila Fitzgerald. I am the inventor of the Banner Neuro Wellness Center in downtown Gilbert.
I'm Annette Edwards, and I'm lucky enough to be the manager of Banner Neuro Wellness.
Let's give them each a round of applause for what they do for our community. So it's quite a proclamation. I'll just read a couple of the lines of it. "Whereas Parkinson's disease is a chronic progressive neurological disease and is the second most common neurodegenerative disease in the United States." We'll skip down to the bottom where it says, "Whereas increased education and research is needed to find more effective treatments with fewer side effects, and ultimately, a cure for Parkinson's disease." And now therefore, John W. Lewis, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, does hereby proclaim April 2014 to be Parkinson's Awareness Month.
Hi, on behalf of the group here, I just want to say thank you, Mayor Lewis. Thank you. Thank you, Town Council. Please come and visit Banner Neuro Wellness, right downtown, the Heritage Center. You know, for those of you out there, there are 25,000 people in the state of Arizona with Parkinson's disease. We estimate 3,500 in the East Valley. What you may not know is that Banner Neuro Wellness, which was... What you may not know is that Banner Neuro Wellness, which was the brainchild of Sheila and Alan Fitzgerald and their family, Banner Health and the American Parkinson Disease Association is the premier place in the state of Arizona for people with Parkinson's to come and do exercise, build community, and be educated on this condition. So, thank you for the support of the Town of Gilbert for this. I can't say enough about Banner Health as well as being a huge partner in this. Sheila, did you want to...
I just want to say thank you, and please come down and see us. If you know anyone that has Parkinson's, we are making headway against this disease. We have people that are in wheelchairs, that are now in walkers, and that are in walkers, and now are just using cane. Some people have spoken to their spouses for the first time in years. So please come see us and direct anybody that needs help our way.
To each of you, thank you, especially the Fitzgeralds. Thank you for what you do for the community. Next, we invite up Kelly. Is Kelly here? Thank you very much. We'll pass the microphone over to you and have you introduce yourself.
My name is Kelly Doops, and I'm the Program Specialist for Mothers Against Drunk Driving of Arizona.
Give them a round of applause, please. Again, it's, we have quite a proclamation. We'll read just a few lines of it. This is, whereas the Town of Gilbert recognizes the importance of parents talking with their teens about alcohol, and after many paragraphs, whereas I urge all citizens to join the local and national efforts to raise awareness of the importance of parents, teens talking together about alcohol in order to reduce the risks and dangers posed to teens and communities. And now therefore, John Lewis, the Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, does hereby proclaim April 21st, 2014 to be Mothers Against Drunk Driving Power Talk 21 Day in Gilbert, Arizona.
And we invite Sarah to come forward. Sarah Robbins-Prahl. We're going to take a second to raise some awareness to a very unknown condition here in the United States. And we'll go ahead and start and give Sarah a chance to say a few words if you'd like, and then we'll go into the proclamation.
Hi, my name is Sarah. My son Asher was born with a disease called congenital diaphragmatic hernia. I had no idea what it was till my doctor came in and said, "Your son has a serious health defect." My sons... When my son was born, he had a hole in his diaphragm that compromised both his lungs, his liver, that was all up in his chest. When he was born, he was born as a preemie. They took him and had to intubate him right away because he wasn't breathing. My son lived for six days afterwards. This disease is more common than anyone would even have a clue about. Out of 2,500 births, half of them that have the diaphragmatic hernia don't survive. And this is my son Asher.
Thank you so much for sharing that with us, a very tender and personal thing, and thank you for letting people know about this disease. In fact, I'll read part of the proclamation, it'll help explain some of this. Whereas since 2000, the year 2000, it is estimated that over 500,000 babies have been born with CDH. However, only 50% of those babies survived. Whereas raising awareness of this congenital defect will help bring about acceptance and support for those suffering with it, and will help advocate for urgently needed medical research and advances. Now therefore, John W. Lewis, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert, does hereby proclaim April 19th, 2014 to be Congenital Diaphragmatic Hernia Awareness Day. Thank you.
I'd like to invite Sam and Daniel up to the front. We appreciate the opportunity to highlight important issues here in our community, right? Thank you very much. We have, as we recognize World Autism Awareness Day, we'd like to introduce Sam and Daniel briefly, and Daniel, if you'd just want to say hello briefly. I know you don't have anything prepared.
Hello, my name is Daniel DePalma. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis and Council for the proclamation for Gilbert Autism Awareness Day. I brought this painting to remind people to light it up blue for the 1 in 68 children challenged by autism. Our friend Daniel DePalma will accept the proclamation for our families. Thank you.
Wonderful. Look at this beautiful piece of art here. The Blue Arizona scene, it's gorgeous. And I, what I will do is read briefly this proclamation as you present that to Daniel, and then I'll present this to both of you. Whereas autism affects all persons regardless of race, religion, socioeconomic status, or geography. Whereas the incidence of autism in the United States is 1 in 150 and 1 in 68 boys, with rates appearing to have increased similarly around the globe. And whereas a child is diagnosed with autism every 20 minutes, and it's estimated that there are at least 35 million around the world that have autism, the aims of World Autism Awareness Day are to inform the general public about this crisis and stress the importance of early diagnosis and early intervention, and to celebrate the unique talents, as we're seeing here tonight, and qualities of individuals with autism. So now therefore, the Town of Gilbert, Arizona implements the ideals of World Autism Awareness Day in perpetuity until a cure for autism is found. Very good. Thank you.
Caleb Alger. As Caleb comes down, let me tell you a little bit about Caleb. It is our pleasure to extend congratulations to Gilbert resident Caleb Alger in recognition of his accomplishment as being the only Arizona student selected to attend the prestigious Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Advanced Leadership Academy in Birmingham, Alabama. You attended just this past February. Will you tell us just a few things that you feel like you learned and gained from that experience?
It was a great experience going to Hobie. I loved just being around people that were striving toward leadership roles, as well as me. I learned a lot about how to balance a budget and everything. I had no idea what credit was until I actually went there, and so how it's a good idea to have a good credit. And while I was there, we learned how to start a program in our community about how to change your community in a certain way and eventually change your nation. And it taught me the rules that I need to be a good citizen and how to make a difference in the community.
Wonderful. Thank you, Caleb. I'm excited that you're bringing that knowledge back to Gilbert. On behalf of Mayor Lewis, we want to congratulate you, and we look forward to great things from you in the future. Melissa? Thinking you might be able to guess what Melissa's here for. Melissa, why don't you introduce yourself and tell us what you've recently won?
Hello, everyone. I'm Melissa Dubin. I'm Miss Phoenix's Outstanding Teen. That's a preliminary pageant in the Miss America Organization. I won that back in January. I worked really hard to get here, and now I have the opportunity to serve around the city of Gilbert and also around the state. I work for a community service initiative, which is my platform, Help and Hope for Teens with Depression, which has real meaning to me, and I've gotten to work with nonprofit organizations, especially in the Valley. Soon I'll be competing for Miss Arizona's Outstanding Teen, where I'll get to serve around the entire state of Arizona, if I win. Thank you so much.
When you win. On behalf of the community, we'd like to congratulate Melissa for her incredible accomplishments. We also know that as a leader in the community, you'll do great things. So, thank you.
Mayor, I'm going to invite Melanie Dykstra to join me here for this recognition of Arbor Day while she's coming up. We'll mention that in 1872, Arbor Day was first observed, and in 2008, Gilbert received the recognition of Tree City, USA. And here in 2014, we again have received the recognition of Tree City, USA. And I'd like to give this proclamation to Melanie Dykstra, one of the leaders in our Parks and Recs organization, and it says a number of things, but it essentially declares April 25th, 2014 as Gilbert Arbor Day here in Gilbert, Arizona. So, let's recognize that. Thank you. I would like to invite Mike Mallo. Will you please come forward? And do you have some members of your family here as well, Mike? Can we have them come up here as well next to you? Would that be all right? This is a, if they would like to come up, that would be just wonderful. And can you just introduce your family real quickly before we begin?
Sure. This is my son, Thomas, my wife, Deb, and my mom, Viola.
Well, this is maybe a sad day for some of us, but we do want to recognize you for a certificate of appreciation for your years of service here with the Town of Gilbert. Mike is going to retire from our wonderful team here, Team Gilbert, and he has been part of our planning department for 12 years, working on many, many projects that we see here in Gilbert that are really the legacies of Gilbert. And I can't even imagine all the 500 projects that you may have touched here in Gilbert, but your hands have been very much involved. And many of us just want to extend an extreme thank you for your years of service that you've done with the Town of Gilbert. And with this, Mike, we have this certificate of appreciation for you. I know I speak on behalf of the mayor, the council, the town manager, your staff that you've worked with, and again, a sincere thank you.
Recently, the 2013 MVP Award Recognition Event took place in the Town of Gilbert. If those individuals are here, could they please come forward? Six individuals were recognized, and to the members of the Town Council, we've got a program for you in just a minute. I had a chance to be at this event, and I think it might, well, let's do this. So, we're about to queue up a video that, as Paul Harvey would say, tells the rest of the story, but I'm going to pass the microphone to each of you. If you could give us your name and how many years you have been with the Town of Gilbert, and then the video will tell the rest of the story.
Doug Boyer, Purchasing Administrator, and two years as of yesterday.
Mary Vinzant, Budget Office, 10 months.
Andy Larkin, about nine and a half years.
Linda Edwards, Planning Manager, 14 years.
Randy Perkins, EMS Specialist, two and a half years.
We ready for the video? Roll it, please. We'll get to it, Linda.
Linda, you could just do it live.
Because I do feel that every customer is important, and I do feel it's our... It's a heartwarming feeling to be recognized by a coworker or a peer for the values associated with respect. And it's a, it's a very important part of my job. I would like to thank the town for giving me a wonderful opportunity to work here. I have also been a very active resident, and I, I feel that those who have nominated me chose a category that is dear to my heart, and I'm very happy that respect was one of those values that others saw in me, because I do feel that every customer is important, and I do feel it's our obligation to do the best we can to help them out.
The category of innovation is very important because it is improving the processes within the town to make this a better place for workers and citizens. I'd like to thank the person that submitted this nomination. I'm blessed to be part of an organization that, with managers that provide support and encouragement for process improvements that better the town. I'd also like to thank IT, the Administrative Assistance throughout the town, who have provided us with their patience and feedback for our process improvements. And last but not least, I would like to thank my coworker, Grace Butcher, who is my teammate, and I'm honored to accept this on behalf of both of us.
Integrity is a very key part of what we do in public purchasing. You know, we have to be completely above board and partial. We have to maintain a fair and open procurement environment, competitive environment, and then within the town, we have to be able to follow up and meet our commitments in terms of schedules. More important to me, though, is the fact that I'm getting recognition from my peers, the people that I directly supervise and interact with. And that means a great deal because it's, it's essentially a vote of confidence in the job I'm doing and the way I'm working with them.
Well, I think communication with anything you do is so important. How you communicate your message and whatever it is you're trying to achieve can make or break a particular product. So, I think that for the Town of Gilbert, it's incredibly important that we always think about how and what we're communicating and what we're trying to achieve. I would just like to say thank you to the person who nominated me. It's such an honor to receive this award, and as a new member of Team Gilbert, I'm just so excited for the work that I've been able to do with the Office of Management and Budget thus far, and look forward to many more projects to come.
I learned the importance of accountability when I was little. Mom and dad taught me accountability early on. They made me and my brother follow through with whatever. They made me and my brother follow through with whatever we did, whether it be baseball or school, whatever. And now it's important because I think that's what people remember you for. People like to rely on a person that accomplishes tasks and gets things done. You know, I'm in good company. I have... I know tons of people that I work with that are accountable. So, I guess it's easy to be an accountable person in the department that I work for. It's nice to know that just the hard work and the dedication that we all apply to this job doesn't go unnoticed.
So, to Doug and Mary and Andy and Linda and Randy and Kamitch, who's not able to be with us tonight, our 2013 MVPs representing the values of the town of Gilbert. Big round of applause.
Mayor, we have one more. Recognition. Do we have any of the folks from our Streets Division here? If you're here, please come forward. Our Streets Division, once again, took first place at the Street Rodeo Event. And could you share a bit more about how that went again? Seems like you dominate every year.
Sure. My name is Curtis Yardley. I'm the Streets Manager here with the town of Gilbert. And once a year, we have an event where we get all of the different street departments from around the valley together and have friendly competition. We compete in different equipment events, different things that have to do with working in street departments. And it's a friendly competition that we have and we do keep score and see who takes first, second, and third place. And overall, this year, the town of Gilbert was able to win the best of the best trophy amongst all the cities that were here throughout the valley.
Well, Curtis, with you and your team, we'd like to extend a wonderful round of applause and appreciation for all the efforts that we do in Gilbert. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that we could end it there and call it a very successful meeting. There is additional business that needs to be taken care of and so we now move to Agenda Item Number 12, Communication from Citizens. Vice Mayor Cook, do we have some requests tonight?
Mayor, we do have one individual that would like to speak. We'd like to welcome to the podium Brett Honig.
Brett, you're invited to go forward. And as Brett has seen in the past, if you can state your name and if you're a Gilbert resident for the record, then you'll have up to three minutes to speak. Thanks, Brett.
My name is Brett Honig. I live at 508 East Page Avenue, Gilbert resident.
Thank you, Brett.
I'd like to speak. Me and Kristen was trying to get approval from you, President Lewis and Town Manager, to put pictures up in the fire station... in the office over all the old people working here, George Pettit and my favorite offshore... Favorite Officer... My favorite officer, Chief, Gilbert Chief. We want to put pictures in the fire station office, all the pictures around the fire station.
Thank you. What a great idea. So, we'll just pass that to our town manager.
I'd like to... I wanted to cross something else. The courthouse in Mesa and all the courthouse is closed on Fridays and they cut the budget. Courthouse is closed on all Friday and all the courthouse in Mesa, City Mesa courthouse is closed and they work seven till six through Monday till Thursday. My town manager know on the 30th, my CM on 30th. I'm going to let you know, Mayor. All the courthouse is closed on Friday. The Superior Court is going to do it too. I'm just letting you know, Town Manager. They're going to start next month in Phoenix. I just letting you know, the courthouse is going to be closed on Fridays now because they cut the budget.
Brett, thank you. Appreciate it.
I'll let you go. Thanks.
We move to the consent calendar. Vice Mayor Cook, what requests do we have on the consent calendar from council members?
Mayor, we have Agenda Item Number 17 and 21 that we'd like to have further discussion.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the other agenda items?
Yes, Mayor. I'd like to move that we approve Agenda Items 14, 15, 16, 18, 19... Excuse me. 19's been polled. 18, 20, and 22 through 26.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a six oh vote. Thank you. We move to Agenda Item 17.
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor.
Okay. Let's proceed then. All to entertain a motion on 17?
Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve Agenda Item Number 17.
Second. With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a seven oh vote with that "aye." Agenda Item 21?
Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Taylor.
Mayor, I'm not going to say much. I just got an email or memorandum with new information that I hadn't seen until tonight. So, some of my concerns, they may be addressed in there. I'm not sure, at least with these specific projects. So, I'll kind of put that aside and just say the jury's out on some of that. But the main point is still that, you know, with this issue, federal spending is an issue of responsibility and so many of us, we all have a part to play. We can't absolve ourselves of that. We're spending federal dollars. And the reality is here in Gilbert, I think we have the ability to fund ourselves without any federal funding. I think we can do that without any major impacts. And in the long term, I think we'll be better off. We'll be more self-reliant for those critical services. I don't want to be reliant upon those funds. I don't know what's going to happen there if they get their act together. Those things could be coming to an end. If they don't get their act together, those things could be coming to an end even more suddenly. So, the bottom line is I continue to be opposed to this. I am concerned about how these projects came to be. We were told by staff that we couldn't meet the requirements of CDBG and that's all changed now and so... But anyway, I won't ramble on, but I remain concerned about it.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, likewise, just continue to oppose unnecessary federal spending. There was a pretty dire, nonpartisan report released by the Federal Office of Management and Budget on the expanding debt and the burden it's going to be. So, just continue to oppose that. I think just in the instance of fiscal responsibility, you know, we should take ownership of the things that we can and so I'll continue to oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the item as presented to us.
Second.
Okay. With that motion and second, please vote. Thank you. That's approved with a five to two vote. Thank you. We move to the public hearing. Vice Mayor Cook, as you may have some preliminary feedback from council members. If not, we can check. Do we have specific items council members want discussed?
Mayor, I know that there were some requests to talk about, I believe, the liquor license. I believe it was Agenda Item 28.
Just a separate vote, please.
Separate vote. As it relates to the other agenda items. 35A? That's administrative.
So, let me... And let me start with Councilmember Peterson. Do you have... I have not opened the public hearing, but this is just to check. Do you have any items that you wanted to have discussed? Councilmember Ray? 32, okay. Then I will open the public hearing on Agenda Items 27, 29, 30, 33, 34, 35. And I will close the public hearing on those agenda items. And we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve those items.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please vote. That's approved with a seven oh vote. I now open the public hearing on Agenda Item 32. Councilmember Daniels?
Just real quick, and I'm thinking maybe Manager Baner can answer this, not to put you on the spot or anything. We have two property acquisitions, one's for Cooper and Guadalupe and one's for... No. Yeah, Cooper and Guadalupe and Gilbert and Guadalupe. And I just want to double-check for the benefit of the citizens that we're not planning on entering into construction in both those intersections at exactly the same time. Oh, Edgar. Sorry. I put you on the spot because I couldn't... I didn't see Edgar, but here he is magically.
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Daniels, yes, the Gilbert and Guadalupe intersection will start construction next... in the next two weeks. And the Gilbert... I'm sorry, the Cooper Guadalupe will not start until the tail end of this project. So, they will not be on top of each other.
Thank you. Peace of mind for the citizens that have to enter those streets.
Any... Oh, Councilmember Taylor, please.
I thought the addendum said that that was actually a typo, that that should read for 32. Did I read that wrong? Cooper and Gilbert?
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Taylor, I believe 32 should be for project number... for Gilbert Guadalupe.
Okay. Thank you. I got it started.
Thank you. As a council, are we ready to proceed with 32? I close the public hearing on Agenda Item 32 and will entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. Thank you. And I believe I skipped over 28. Excuse me. I open the public hearing on Agenda Item 28. And any discussion or should we close it and vote? Okay. I close the public hearing on Agenda Item 28. We'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve Agenda Item Number 28.
Second.
Okay. With that motion and second, please vote. That's approved with a four to three vote. Thank you. We move to administrative items. Agenda Item 35A, we discussed in the study session on Tuesday. And Kyle, if you could, for those here in council chambers, give a quick overview of what the subject matter is and update since Tuesday night.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. Council, Item 35A is a discussion that the staff wanted to have with council on options and direction related to credit card fees and development services. We've been taking credit cards now for a couple of years and the credit card fees that the town is paying is approaching about $230,000 this year. We did some different research and came up with five options that we presented to council in your communication for discussion relating to moving forward with credit card fees. At Tuesday night's study session, we had a discussion about some of the different cities and towns in the valley and whether or not we were able to put a limit or cap the amount of a charge on a credit card. One of the examples that was brought up was Queen Creek. And we've had discussions with Queen Creek and their merchant service provider and they are in the process of going back and looking at their business process. In the information that their merchant service provider provided to them and then to us, it says clearly in the Visa rules that you cannot limit the amount that is charged on a credit card. And then also in our service contract that we have with our provider, first line, first sentence of the first page says we're not permitted to limit the amount in any way, shape, or form. So, there are two exceptions and that is if you're a federal agency or an institution of higher education. So, we don't fall under either of those categories at this point in time. So, we're back to the five different options then that we've presented to the council for discussion. Each one of them has different pros and cons. I can go through each one of those if you want or stop now and begin discussion.
Thank you. Councilmembers, thoughts? Discussion? Councilmember Daniels?
Because of the burden that this has placed on the town, and I say burden, but it is cutting into the revenues that we use to pay for the service that we are providing. And so, I... My hope is that we can agree to pass along that charge as a convenience fee to the customer. That would be... That would be my preference, Mayor.
Mayor?
Councilmember Cooper?
Just to clarify, looking at the staff report, Councilmember Daniels, a convenience fee may... I think you might be referring to the merchant surcharges. And maybe, Kyle, could you explain the differences between those two?
Absolutely. And they're very... The titles can often be confused. The convenience fee is a flat fee that's set on every charge. If it's a $5 credit card fee and the convenience fee is $3, you're charged $3. If the convenience fee is $3 and you have a $10,000 charge, it's still $3. It doesn't change no matter what the credit card charge is. The merchant surcharge or the checkout fee is a flat percentage then that's charged. So, if it's a $5 credit card charge, it's 3% of that. If it's a $10,000 charge, it's 3% of that. That is staff's preference. We believe that that will have some... If somebody comes in with a $100,000 credit card charge in a bill, the likelihood of them wanting to pay an extra $3,000 just to use their credit card is unlikely. So, we would then encourage them to use alternative methods of payment.
I used the wrong terminology, Mayor. I intended to pass along whatever it costs the town to the individual receiving the service. Thanks for correcting.
Mayor?
Please?
Follow-up, just last comment. I agree. I think that it should be kind of up to the user, if you will, to choose. I do... I would, you know, it looks like you have a note in here where you... It's possible to charge this surcharge for some transactions and not others. And I didn't know if you had a specific proposal in mind or if we were to give direction tonight on this merchant surcharge or checkout fee that you might come back with recommendation there?
Mayor Lewis and council, the... We're able to do it on... Leslie may help me, on merchant IDs. So, all building permits, anything that's issued through development services, a building permit is a merchant ID. So, that surcharge or fee would be put on each one of those. But a Parks and Rec fee is different. It's a different ID number. So, that could have a different percentage or no percentage at all. Other fees that way, if each one has a different merchant ID number, we're able to charge that direction. So, what our proposal would be is to do it on all the building permit fees that are moving forward and any of the fees out of development services. And we can obviously come back if that's the direction of the council and make sure that we're following the right direction as far as what we're charging the fees for.
Councilmember Ray?
I'm in favor of just moving forward with the option that they recommend, which is a full cost recovery. And if it's a 3% charge that we pay the processing company, then they charge a 3%. And we just do it across the board for whether it's Visa or MasterCard, whatever the different percentages are, that's our percentage is the same thing. So, we don't make money. We don't lose money. It's just cost recovery.
Councilmember Peterson?
Just to be clear, the way I understand... And maybe Kyle can make sure I'm right on this, but we have to settle on a percentage that we charge everyone. I don't think we can change the percentage based on the merchant's charge. So, have we settled... I think the average is between 3 and 3.5%. If we settled on 3.5%... If we settled on 3.25%, we'd have to use that same for everyone regardless of what the underlying charge was. But at the end of the day, we would be net zero on that. So I just wanted to point that out because it, it can't quite map to the merchant, I don't think that's allowed, so.
Mayor Lewis, council, that's correct. Each credit card has a different fee. So if you have a Capital One with cash back, it may be 3.5%. If you have an American Express Black, it may be 2%. So the idea then is to, to initiate 1%age fee, and there may still be fees to the town after that, but the, the idea and the intent would be to capture as much as you can with that average fee of, of say, 3% or 3.25%.
Councilmember Taylor?
Kyle, if someone comes to pay a fee, can you tell us a little bit more about how do they know what their options are, so they don't inadvertently, you know, choose one that they, you know, may, you know, find that there's a better option?
Absolutely, Mayor, council. With the surcharges and the checkout fees, there are some rules that are associated with that, and some of those are placing signs in, in areas that alert people that there are surcharges or fees associated with using a credit card. On the receipt itself, there has to be a separate line that outlines what that, that amount is. So we would, as folks approach the counter, they would see that there were signs, and our, our staff at the front counter would be able to talk to them about the different payment methods that we could use. Similarly, online, we would do the same type of thing. We've recently issued an RFP for merchant services contract, and we're currently going through the selection process. So once any merchant service is selected, we'll need to work very closely with them and our software providers to ensure that we're able to, to set up that, those rules and set up that system so that it works and everybody's notified of the, of the fee and the charge.
Thank you, Kyle. I think when we do a transition of whatever sort, it's probably good to have a little extra communication on what the options are, so business owner doesn't get, you know, the surprise after it's, it's too late. But Mayor, I'm happy with, you know, the comments here, can go with that particular option.
Right. And the summary of what I hear is cost recovery. And Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, because it's an optional service, people have choices to pay other ways, I do think it's appropriate we get 100% cost recovery. They're making the choice to create the cost, I think they should pay for that cost in those cases. But I, I want to propose another idea. I don't know, I don't know if this makes sense or not, but I think we might be able to take a step in that direction and still get almost all the benefits. And the idea is this, and I can support the 3.25, I think that's fine. But even if we did something lesser like a 1% or a 2%, for one, we could at least, for those who may be upset about the change, because again, we're not where we used to be, which is, we didn't offer the convenience at all. At that stage, I think 100% cost recovery, that's what I argued for, and I still think it's right. But we can still say, hey, we're giving you a service that's, you know, less than, we're giving it to you for less than it costs us. So they can take that. The other thing that can happen is we'll get back some of our funds, but finally, the biggest thing is, people will stop using it. You just put in that percentage, there's going to be people fleeing that anyway. So we might be able to do something lesser and have almost everything we're looking for. We could evaluate it in six months or a year and see how it's going. It's an idea, I can support the 100%, but I just want to throw that out there.
Okay, I'm not seeing support for that, but good try. All right, thank you. So any other discussion? I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I do have one quick question. Is, to Kyle, is 3.25, is that the average?
The average is somewhere between about 3 and 3.5%. Yeah. When you, when you look at all the different credit cards, that's usually what it ranges. And with the, with the law that was passed about a year ago, we're able to charge up to 4%. So 3.25 would be right in the, right in the realm of the average and within our legal limits.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray, would you like to make a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve Item 35A, using Option Number Four that was recommended by staff, and we use a rate of 3.25% on all credit card charges.
I'll second that.
Mayor, can I add to that, that you come back to us, Kyle, in six months and let us know how that's averaging out, so that we can understand if that really is the right percentage? Just keeping an eye on it.
Mayor Lewis, council, absolutely. And just to be clear, we're, we're just doing it in development services, it won't be townwide on any other charges, it's just the development services, charges, building permits, those sorts of things.
Mayor.
Councilmember Cooper, and then Councilmember Peterson?
Just a little discussion on that. I'm a little hesitant myself to set this rate from the dais. I know we've got some information here, but I think the general direction that staff obtain cost recovery is sufficient for me, for them to also be able to tweak it from time to time as it changes, as long as they're staying in line with the direction. And so that, I'd hate for them to have to come back to us and say, you know, it really needs to be 3.29% all the ti, you know what I'm saying? I'd rather just be more generic and our direct cost recovery.
So to our town attorney, if, it's not specific, but it's the direction as far as policy, does that work?
Mayor, members of the council, it can be. Perhaps directions, something along the lines of not to exceed 4% with discretion to staff to determine the true cost recovery and, and set the, the fee or the, the percentage as appropriate.
Councilmember Ray, how do you feel about that?
I'm thinking about it, Mayor. I have concerns that, that rates would then begin to fluctuate a little bit on a daily or weekly basis. And maybe I'm just thinking worst-case scenario and I'm being paranoid about it, sort of thing. I, I'm more inclined to set a rate, and then as Councilwoman Daniels said, come back at six months or whatever the appropriate time is, and review that, and if it's too high or too low. But I, I think, I agree with what Councilmember Cooper's saying, I just think that we're better off setting a rate, and just, that way there's no question when someone comes in what it was going to be.
Vice Mayor Cook, and then Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, my fear is, you know, this week, we have it at a certain rate, a month from now, we have a different rate. The users that come in and use that for convenience may find out that they paid higher versus the one that paid less. I think we can be walking into some potential, you know, areas of conflict here. So I, I agree, I think we set the rate, we monitor it six months and see how it goes. Again, this is really a convenience fee to use, is, we may not get a, a number of users that do the $10,000 by credit card. It's probably going to be geared for more of the smaller payment users that's convenient.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, there's only one last thought I had on this, is, Kyle, have we reached out at all to the business community, just to see if, if there's some other way to do this? I know that we can still do the right thing by the taxpayer, but also make sure we've incorporated new ideas that maybe they might have on the issue.
Mayor Lewis, council, no, we have not reached out, we have not done any stakeholder groups, or we haven't talked to the chamber, the SBA, we haven't, we were solely focused on the, the amount of fees that were being spent by the town.
I, I only ask that just in case there's some other idea we didn't think of. If there's no rush, I think it'd be better to at least open the door on that, get the feedback, come back. I do think it's right to get the full cost recovery, but maybe there's some other way of doing it that accomplishes that end that we haven't thought of. I think it's good to always ask and get as many inputs as we can, so I just throw it out, that out there to the council.
Mayor Lewis, I think there is a rush. I mean, this is essentially costing us $20,000 a month as a community, and so I think there is a desire to move forward. I would rather have that conversation occur, and if they would need to come back to us in some way. I do want consistency for the user of the convenience, so I would like to see it not change on a fairly regular basis, but also we, we don't want to be, our intention is not to make money doing this either. And so I'm fine with moving forward with a direct percentage today, and then tweaking as needed.
Councilmember Cooper?
And I can definitely support the direction that's been stated here. I would, just alternatively, I, my hesitancy is to have us as a town council setting credit card rates all the time, even if it's six months or a year at a time. I'd almost rather advise or encourage staff to set a rate that has not changed more than once per year or something like that, but still leave it in the hands of management as opposed to in the hands of the board. I just feel like I don't really personally want to be talking about the, the credit card rate that often up here.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, a thought has just occurred, or has just arisen with regards to whether if we impose this, we are affecting the statute, or, or the statute applies, which requires us to post changes in rates or fees for, post them for 60 days and have a public hearing. And so it, it might be appropriate to continue this one meeting while that, while that issue's addressed, as well as some of these other issues that we're having, that you'd like to have, perhaps like to have staff look at.
If we proceeded to vote, and you found some information that caused you concern about our vote, how do you feel about that?
We would have to, we would have to stop collecting, and then we would come back and, and do it pursuant to statute. If you, if you raise fees or adjust fees, there's requirements that they'd be posted for a period of time with a, with a public hearing. I just don't know at this moment whether this type of, of action would be a raise of a fee.
Well, what I'm hearing you say is you'd like another two weeks to research and have this come back on the next agenda?
Yes.
Okay, Vice Mayor Cook?
So again, to me, this doesn't sound like it is a fee, but it's more of a cost recovery for the service. And normally, businesses and users have that expectation already, so you're saying, even though we're trying to recover that transaction fee, that would have to be posted?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, it all depends on how the statutes were to. It may not have been intended to cover something like this, but if it's stated in a particular way, it could easily cover this.
So to the council, as Councilmember Daniels said, there is urgency. The legal counsel we've just received, we okay waiting a couple of weeks?
We have to.
Okay. We have to, okay. All right. Then, thank you for the council. Well, we have a motion, a second, but we never voted.
Okay.
So we move on. And we move on to Agenda Item 36, boards, commissions, and committees, any feedback? Councilmember Cooper?
Just briefly, we did mention Gilbert and Guadalupe construction coming, as well as there's, there's construction in the downtown area. We want to just encourage town residents and, and those from around the valley to continue to shop Gilbert, come downtown, go to the zone, the cones, or whatever you want to say, there are some great merchants there. They're, they're doing pretty well, but we'd still want to make sure that folks are aware that the business, there's great places to shop and to eat and to be entertained downtown. If you are interested in construction schedules, it is available on our website or by contacting a member of staff. But just want to encourage everyone to shop Gilbert.
Thank you. Future meetings, they exist, we'll pay attention to our calendars. 39, report from Town Manager?
Mayor, and members of the council, I'm not the Town Manager, of course, but I do have something I wish to say. I always look forward to this opportunity, I have to interrupt Patrick. But on March 27th, there was, this last month, there was a council-approved resolution calling for an election and authorizing the clerk to execute a menu of services. In that council communication, there was some misinformation about what the cost would be to this town if we were to do an all-mail-in ballot. And this council may have made a decision on that agenda item with respect to the menu of services they wanted based on that incorrect information. It was stated at that time that a, that a mail, all-mail-in ballot cost $2.12 per voter. That is incorrect. We learned yesterday that the cost is 50 cents, the same as it is for a, a polling place or non-all-mail-in ballot. And so because that was incorrect, we thought it necessary to mention to the council that if the council wished to switch to an all-mail ballot, we would need to have a council meeting next week so as to get that approved, amend that prior resolution, and get it to the Maricopa County Clerk before the, before their deadline. And so I mentioned this is the time to determine if there's any interest in a meeting next week, if any, if there's any number of you who wish to consider an all-mail ballot.
So there is a memo that we have been given, and I have not, I have not had a chance to study this, as we just received it tonight. Does it say here, if we continue with our normal process of having election sites and, some have any option to mail in early ballots, what that cost is?
Yes, it's, that, that information was correct. That was 50, 50 cents per voter. The incorrect information in the, in the council communication of last month was that an all-mail ballot was $2.12 per voter.
To the council, what are your feelings?
Last Parker tweets something other than this is male, as in postal.
Yes.
Male, not female.
M-A-I-L.
I'd hate to have a throwback-type election in Gilbert.
No, the universal suffrage did pass nearly a century ago.
There ain't no one that conservative on this council.
Okay. And this is not a vote, this is more just open discussion, which would cause us to schedule a meeting next week?
Direction, direction to staff to schedule a meeting next week.
Okay.
If there's interest.
So let me start at this end. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you for the information. I think I'm okay as we had currently planned.
Okay. It looks like no meeting next week.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you for bringing it up. Now, to our Town Manager, please.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, I had only one item tonight, I now have a second one. I'd like to request the town attorney report directly to me as opposed to the council, so that I might address certain issues with said town attorney. I'll leave that for you to consider. I wanted to remind everyone about the passenger rail corridor study that ADOT currently has going on, where we're in the final phase of the public comment period, and we want to make sure that everybody who has an opinion on this, as a resident of Gilbert, gets their voice heard. We're going to have some more information coming out next week on our town website and through our social media channels. But right now, as it stands of the original seven alternatives, there are still three routes under consideration. The yellow route, which goes through Gilbert, is one of those routes. The public comment period is open until May 31st, and ADOT is seeking input from the public in regards to which alternative you feel is the most desirable, and your voice definitely counts on this. So we'll have more information coming out next week, but I want to take the opportunity to remind everyone, if they have a, an opinion on this, to please get on the ADOT website and, and let that opinion be heard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda Item 40, report from council members. Vice Mayor Cook?
I'm not sure if I can empower this or say something, but I do, I did learn last week that we may have the wrong title of Mayor Lewis, so I'd like to dub you as Lord Mayor Lewis, and I have this little new sign for you here. Didn't we address, there's no titles of nobility?
That's, I, I had this discussion already with Councilmember Taylor, that we had visiting from our sister city, Newton Abbey, Northern Ireland, Mayor Fraser Agnew, and that was a title that he was, had been given, and so we respected that. And then Councilmember Taylor reminded me that in the formation of the Constitution, we just decided not to have any titles like that in the United States, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. If our Town Manager wanted to call me that, though, that would be okay.
During baseball season.
All right. Anything else on 40, please?
Mayor, as the legislative session winds down, we still have one outstanding issue that we would love for our legislators to tackle, and that is the fix for our elections, a problem not created by us, but require us to meet a certain threshold in a primary election that would basically prohibit anyone from winning in a primary election, essentially holding our primary election without merit. And I would love to see our legislature approach that and take care of that before session ends. I understand that people are working diligently, but while I have the microphone tonight, I just wanted to urge our I just wanted to urge our citizens to contact their legislators and do all that we can to continue to push this issue. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
I just want to report a little behind the scenes on that, as I hear from my brother quite frequently. He's working very, very hard on this, and others are too. Last I talked to them, they do feel like they have a viable plan to make it happen. But again, I guess that's not totally certain, but they're very dedicated to it and they're working very hard on it.
Thank you. Anything else on Agenda Item 40? Agenda Item 41, I had a chance to thank our team Gilbert for many things in the study session, and so I don't have any other items. Meeting adjourned.